Seven o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting to order. If you'd hand me the citizens to be heard. Without objection, we're going to dispense with the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. Before we get started and before we actually formally open the meeting, I would ask that each of you keep Gabby Creed in your thoughts and prayers. Gabby is at Northwest Baptist in intensive care, and I hope that each one of you will keep her in your prayers. We're now opening the meeting. Having dispensed with the pledge and the invocation, we will proceed to citizens to be heard. Barbara Simpson, 100 Ripple Creek. Barbara, if you could give your name and your full address, please.
My name is Barbara Simpson. I've resided at 100 Ripple Creek for the last 20 years. I came to speak to you in strong favor of an open use policy for City Hall. City Hall was built with the promise that it would be open to the use of the citizens of Chavino Park, and it was built with our tax dollars. You may not have made that promise, but you bear responsibility to ensure the citizens trust their community government not to do flip-flops on a policy after a promise was made to gain community support to build a municipal structure. There has been no problem associated with residents wanting to use City Hall for community events. Our mayor even told Edward Ortiz this last month, as was reported in the latest edition of the local news, that we had not had any problems. If there has been no problem, why are we spending so much time trying to develop a policy that does not respond to a problem or a citizen need? It seems that this policy is out looking for a problem to solve. Government should not work that way. Finally, there have been only two residents, of whom I am aware, that have come before you to support any restriction on the use of City Hall. Every other citizen who has been interested enough to come to this meeting has strenuously articulated a desire that use of City Hall not be restricted from the residents and resident organizations. You may say that you have been contacted by citizens in support of closing down the use of City Hall, but these citizens have not spoken out before their neighbors at these meetings. Almost all who have been here to speak before you and their neighbors have objected to restricting access to City Hall for residents and resident organizations. I ask you to listen to the residents you represent. Do not adopt a policy that in any way restricts the use of City Hall by residents. If there must be a policy, allow the city manager the discretion to make decisions concerning fair use of the facility. Thank you for your service as council members and for your attention to the desires of residents.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is M.J. Smoot. If you could give your full name and your address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sorry that we have to be here another night. I wanted to ask for you and the audience to vote for my son for Texas State Railroad Commissioner Weston Martinez. And now on to 5.1. As I understand it, a driving motive behind this move for this policy is to avoid lawsuits. And I really like it when I'm talking and people are looking at me, and I would appreciate your attention. As I understand it, a driving motive behind this motive move for a policy is to avoid lawsuits. If that is a concern, I highly recommend you avoid naming unwanted groups by name on video especially. That would seem to me like a lawsuit magnet. I do not feel that this committee did its due diligence in their mutual presentation of this policy 5.1. I feel that we've all been dragged into this because of a two-person committee being assigned. In the future, I highly recommend at least three or more, especially with interested citizens on the issue, assigned to the said community. The only thing worse than no policy would be a bad overreaching policy. In the present, I ask for this motion to be tabled and go back into committee and come out with something reasonable and appropriate for the seven people that requested the use of this city last year that were not under the city guidelines, which are all going to be approved anyways. So I'm asking for common sense, which I think we could all agree on, and I'm really asking for you to relieve the city and the citizens from having this long-drawn-out battle in the public. I would rather it be handled in private with you all, and maybe even bringing some more citizens on this committee that really had an interest in this. And I think that it would look better on us as a city and you as a council. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Just as a point of information and a factual representation, council members cannot meet in subcommittees of three or more. That would be an open meeting violation. They would have to have a regular council meeting. The next one is Carla Laws. Carla, if you could give your nest and telephone.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carla Laws. I live at Six Days of All A Place for, gosh, 11 years. I want to thank you for reconvening yet another workshop to discuss the issue. It's clearly very important to lots of citizens. And I don't know, I'm new kind of to participating in this, so in order to have a weigh-in here, I guess my preference is to not adopt the very first one, which was the final draft presented before the council on the 21st of December, and go with some wordsmithing or some version of the other two that were presented. One in both the Track Change and Clean version, and the other one that was drafted by Alderman Heisel. My only comments were that there's a lot of "may" in some of them that could be cleaned up to be "will," because if you may make the facilities available to citizens, then you may also not make them available to citizens. So I think that might could be more clear. And also, the specification in Alderman Heisel's that a meeting might not otherwise occur. We have our Homeowners Association meetings at someone's home, so it could otherwise occur, but we'd prefer to have it somewhere else if we could. So I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to weigh in, and I look forward to seeing the policy that comes out of this meeting. Thank you.
Carla, thank you very much. If there are no council member comments, we will proceed to item number five. We're going to proceed to item number five, 5.1, Discussion Policy on the Use of City Hall. Mayor Pro-Tim Ross and Alderman Heisel. Do you all want to let Bill kind of give us an update on what he has provided to us, and then we'll come back and we'll conduct this more as a workshop than as a special council meeting, if that's okay with you? And that you don't have to be specifically recognized by me to be able to speak. Is that okay? Okay. So Bill, would you kind of give us the high point of where we started and where we are now?
Well, I won't go over every detail, but the last meeting that we had where we discussed this, the guidance from the councils, I understand it, was there was some question of the 2011 policy that was drafted, and then a question came out, what has changed, and specifically in case law, which occurred since the 2011 draft policy? So we got the attorney here. He's prepared to talk about that and highlight that from that standpoint. With that guidance in mind, we did take a look at the 2011 version of the policy. That policy identifies, actually defines what's called a, it's a community and civic organization, defined as an organization dedicated to the issues of concern specific to Chavino Park community and its continued welfare. And that policy in 2011 provides a very liberal use of the City Hall. And there's two types of, well, there's different categories. There's basically six different authorized uses. All of them are pretty much government uses except for two. One was, and I had that highlighted in the staff summary sheet, E and F. E was meetings of community and civic organizations, including but not limited to neighborhood watch, homeowners associations, women clubs, business clubs, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. That's an authorized use, as defined in the use of civic and community organizations. The other one was rentals for private functions. So that is not something that the staff has, that was written in 2011. There was some interest in that policy, and the attorney is prepared to talk in terms of two things. One, which is what's occurred from 2011 to 2015 that might inform us associated with limited-use forums and et cetera. The other piece is, you know, he and I have had a conversation about what does allowing rentals for private functions do? In your staff summary, I put a note in here that the council should carefully consider either allowing private functions to be leased or prohibiting them. That needs to be a deliberate decision, and I think the attorney's going to be able to give you some information associated with that.
Okay. Dan, do you want to give us an update? If you would give your name and who you're with.
Yes. Dan Santi, Dent Navarro, Rocha Bernal, Hyde and Zek. I'm here for Charlie Zek, who's unavailable. Yes, and Bill has some material that I emailed him that he'll pass out to you. You don't have to read it now, but I know you'll be able to before your next meeting or any further consideration. I was asked by Charlie and Bill to take a look at just developments that have occurred since maybe this policy was written in 2011. And, you know, I guess the area where there's been a lot of activity, it may not readily seem related to what you're doing here, but the review is the same. It's, in the area of like bus wraps and things such as that, there's been quite a bit of litigation. There's been some good discussion too, though, about the difference and distinctions between a limited public forum and a designated public forum. And so what I chose to do and provide you was a summary from McQuillan's that gives a good breakdown of a case. It's not from this circuit, okay? And I'm not providing it as being something from the Fifth Circuit, but I wanted you to see the distinctions that the courts are drawing more clearly now, in my opinion, between what creates a designated and what creates a limited public forum. How that relates to the policy that you have before you, the only thing that entire policy that would give any, should give you any pause whatsoever is the rentals for private functions. And the only reason I say that is because if F is not in the policy that was written in 2011, I don't think there's any question that it's a limited public forum. With F in there, without any further distinctions as to what is allowed or not allowed, or any narrowing of that, then I think you have a designated public forum, or at least there's an argument for that. And I say that because it's not, there's no limitation. If I pay the fee, I can have access. So there's no, you know, there's no narrowing of what that would be available for. For example, the case that I referenced, and the reason why I chose that case is because I used to, where I was before, we had a bus wrap policy that we had to develop, and we had to make sure we rewrote it correctly so that if we were gonna allow advertising or limited advertising, we weren't opening it up to anything. That's exactly what the case that I thought was really good discussion did, because they had a policy that said, hey, you know, you're not gonna advertise alcohol on our buses, and you're not gonna advertise cigarettes or things such as this. And it was fine and good. They had that policy adopted. And then when someone wanted to put what was considered an inflammatory political message on the bus wrap, they initially said, you know, okay, we'll allow it. And then they had so much outrage that they ended up denying it. And, you know, it's kind of predictable in that sense. Well, that's what the court case reviewed, is, okay, was that a limited or was it designated? And what's the difference? And what it comes down to, as you know from the workshop, is the standard of review and how those decisions will be viewed by a court in hindsight. And I appreciate what I've heard, both in the workshop and tonight, from the citizens, that they prefer it to be open, but part of our responsibility is make sure the council's fully informed on what does that actually mean on the backside when someone comes in to rent it from Bill and he says no, if there's no further guidelines other than just rental for, you know, private functions. So that's kind of the area of concern, not so much so that it doesn't mean it's defensible. It just means that it's gonna be a strict scrutiny review as to what the process was, the decision process was, whether to accept some and deny some, if that were to ever occur.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dan. Listening to the council members at our last gathering, it sounded like we were not interested in pursuing a, that there was a majority of council members that were interested in pursuing something other than a closed forum. And we have received a limited forum proposal. This is based on a 2011 proposal that was prepared for city council, reviewed by city council, and abandoned by city council for reasons that we can only really speculate as to the reasons why city council might have rejected it at that time. Having a member of our community who is somewhat, something of a First Amendment expert, I pursued the input of Sean Fitzpatrick. He is a First Amendment attorney here in the city of Chavino Park. He lives on Elm Spring. Bill and I sat down with him. We had about an hour, hour and a half-long meeting with him, and we discussed the limited use options that might be available to us. He consented to provide us some insight as far as the 2011 policy, and the 2011 policy that we have in front of us is modified includes the recommendations that he has made. Bill has gone back through and made a few additional changes concerning the types of fees that would be provided, concerning which portions of the building would be used, considering that we have an outside use policy that is somewhat functional but not really a policy. It's more of a policy and a handout. And so we now have before us the considered opinion of Sean Fitzpatrick, a First Amendment expert, something that he considers to be enforceable. Now, the thing about First Amendment law is that it changes all the time. Circuit courts get together on a periodic basis, decisions go to the Supreme Court. What our council would consider to be enforceable today on a limited-use forum may not be exactly the same policy that would pass muster 10 years from now. It may be that forums become less limited under limited-use forums, or they may become more, access may be more available in the future. But as a city council, your job is to exercise the best judgment based on the facts that are available today and not stray too far into the gray area to where you're questioning whether you ever should have even made a decision. And so I'm gonna open this up for discussion on the purpose of this policy, the contents of the policy, whether we would like to discuss an open forum, whether we want to discuss a limited forum, whether we want to discuss a closed forum. And so I guess what I want to do is get a consensus from you on where you want to start. Can I just have a nod of heads on who wants to start with the limited-use forum first? Okay. We have a majority that would like to begin with the limited-use forum. And so let's begin starting the discussion about a limited-use forum. A limited-use forum allows us to place certain limitations that are not content, that are content-neutral, but can have certain limitations, such as it has to be limited to a community or civic purpose. And that's what this policy does. We can place limitations concerning hours of availability. We can place limitations on the number of people. For example, this room is rated for 75 people, and so under no circumstances would we be able to go beyond 75 people. We can place limitations on whether you paid during the periods that this building would be otherwise open, and that we're not having to provide any additional resources to those people in order for them to come into this building. And then we can discuss the terms of payment for after-hours use where there is an actual cost to the city of Chavino Park. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you guys, and does anybody want to get us started? Mary Ann.
I just want to say, I think it would be helpful, given some of the comments that have been raised by residents and folks that have come to speak, as to, when you talk about a limited use, to explain what that means and why. You talked about giving explanation as to why we're even here in the first place, which is because the city manager asked us for some kind of a policy, whether that be open use, closed use, or something in between. So to explain that to folks so that it helps with the process, because sometimes when you just say, we're talking about a limited use, that that means nobody can use it, or...
Yeah.
What we're doing is we're trying to put a use policy in place, not saying who can and cannot use it, but like you just said, the hours of operation, if we're gonna do something with a fee, if we're gonna do something like that. But it would be helpful to, I think, you know, include those kinds of issues in discussion as we're up here working towards a resolution.
Okay. As a community, we can adopt an open forum, a limited-use forum, or a closed forum. An open forum is open to basically everybody, and to the extent that you make exclusions of any group in the future, that examination would be under a strict scrutiny. A traditional open forum in any community is a sidewalk. And so when you suggest the idea that City Hall have an open-use policy, it would be basically the equivalent of saying the types of uses that people can include on a sidewalk would be permitted in this facility. Now, there are lots of things that people do on sidewalks. I do a lot of youth work. We throw a lot of water balloons at each other's and flower bombs. And obviously, we're not encouraging those types of use because they would be destructive and harmful to this building. But you'd have to have a compelling reason to go through that. Destruction of personal property, I think, would be a justifiable compelling reason to say we're not going to do that. The closed forum is the other end of the spectrum. It's like a pendulum. Over here, we have the open use, and over here, we have the closed use. The closed use says basically that if it is a governmental function, that all governmental functions would be permitted in this building. Unless you are developing a closed-use function that is specifically intended to exclude one particular group, that policy is going to pass muster. It's hard to think of the types of groups that you would be excluding specifically except for the fact that we have a number of circuit court decisions that address the exclusion specifically of church organizations. Oh, we're available for all kinds of things, except if it's a church organization, in which case this closed use is going to be implemented just simply to close out church organizations. The final option is the limited-use option. And the limited-use option is recognizing the traditional type of forum that this is. It's a governmental entity. It has purposes for which governments meet. There are costs associated with this. As a governmental entity, we are required that in all cases, that everything that we provide be provided on a public basis and not on a personal basis. An excellent example of the use of governmental resources for a personal basis instead of a governmental basis would be that you allowed the public works people to mow the mayor's yard, because that's just the traditional thing that we do in Chavino Park. That would be a violation of that public purpose limitation. So as long as we're providing groups, allowing groups in here that are for a public purpose, that's great. They can make representations to us that say that it's a public purpose. They can then do kind of a Lucy Charlie Brown on us, pull the football up, and we can think that it was a public purpose. It can be a private purpose. From the standpoint of the city and the city council and the city manager, that is not a violation. However, it would be the responsibility of the city manager and the city council to take steps to prevent those things from happening again. In establishing the policies that you apply, you want to apply standards that apply to all groups in a uniform basis. The standards can be limitations on hours. This standard has a community use standard. If this group is providing some type of benefit to our community, such as an educational benefit, it would be absolutely permissible for groups to use this facility. One of our problems that we will have in interpreting this is, you know, when you talk about community groups and you don't really know who groups are if they're not actually government reporting items, I think you're really talking about any individual that says I represent a group, that that would be a community group in Chavino Park in all cases. Is that kind of at 20,000 feet enough, Mary Ann? Does that help?
Well, I was just, I was, that's great. I was hoping that we could all have discussion about it as we're working towards.
Okay. Then let's go ahead, and what would you like to discuss first in that?
Me? I just, I think that what we've been hearing from residents and, again, tonight is just, what can we do to make sure that residents have access to City Hall? And I think that to a person up here, we're all concerned about that, and we want to do that, and we want to make sure that we allow that for residents, and also work with council to make sure that we do what is appropriate and best for the city with respect to any legal consequences, so that we have a policy in place that allows that. I mean, I think...
Yeah. I think we're all here to work together toward a solution.
Either we want that as something which would tend to lead towards either an open use or the limited use that we're talking about here. And maybe that's what we need to...
And I think the consensus that I felt, and it wasn't a spoken consensus, it was just that kind of, everybody's kind of nodding as we're talking about the availability of City Hall to the citizens, and everybody's kind of nodding, and it's like, yeah, that sounds like the direction that we're going. And the question is, are we going to go toward a complete open-use policy? This building was not designed for an open-use policy, and in the 13, 14 years that city council has met in these chambers, every city council has said, this is not an open forum. This is not available for parties. It is available for public purposes. And then in 2011, council said, hey, we're concerned about the limited forum applications that are out there, and we are going to close it down to all organizations. That policy kind of slid, and we wound up with allowing community-based organizations. And to this day, to my knowledge, nobody other than, nobody has ever proposed a use of this building for a purpose other than a community-based purpose. And so when we're suggesting that it be civic and community-oriented, that that would be completely consistent with all of the application from the first day until today. And if we were to make it an open forum, that would actually be at variance with the traditional application that city council has applied. Vicky?
An open forum also allows for non-citizens and non-residents to use the building.
An open forum is unlimited. It is available to everybody that happens to be in Chavino Park at any particular moment that meets the time and place and cost parameters that city council may place. That means that people can fly in here from Minnesota if they want to and use the facility. Not to suggest that anybody would, or that anybody has ever suggested that, but they would certainly have that opportunity.
And Mayor, just to clarify one thing.
Yeah, go.
You know, I have concerns about the rentals for private functions, and although I highlighted it in green in your policy, in that that opens it up to a lot of other people that aren't associated with Chavino Park. And I would just ask, in your discussions you consider, because the definition of community and civic organization seems to, seems to address almost all the issues associated with that, you know, with what the previous use is. But if you have a lease agreement, then you are now opening it up more.
Well, if you have a lease agreement for the purpose that you provided, which was the highlighted use, which was rentals for private functions.
For private, yes.
That is different than a lease agreement.
Thanks for clarifying that, yes. And, you know, that would get into where people wanted to rent it, or rent it for not only private functions but for business purposes and other things which may not be conducive and would create wear and tear into the City Hall. So, you know, from my standpoint, most of the things that citizens have talked about are civic and community organizations. They're not, wouldn't necessarily fall under the rentals for private functions piece.
Is F, however, the only one that would allow residents to use it? Because E does not appear to encompass residence. It says meetings of community and civic organizations, and kind of gives an exhaustive list of what could be included.
Well...
Is that fair to say? Maybe it's a question for council.
I think...
I'm just, I'm trying to clarify here real quickly, Mary Ann. Are you talking about that you want to have a party here set? No, I'm sorry, not you. That I want... Are you talking about that you want to have a party here Saturday, no, I'm sorry, not you, that I want to have a party here Saturday night, and that I want to rent the building? Is that what, is that the type of citizen use you're talking about?
Well, I'm just asking, I think we've heard residents say that they were told in the past that City Hall was open, would be open to them, was a building that would be open to them. And so I'm trying to figure out where in this policy they would be included. And to me, it would seem like that falls under the rental for private functions. Because if a resident wanted to come and use it, for whatever reason, and again, I'm just going on, on what has actually happened in the past, and how many residents have come and asked to use it for a private function?
I haven't had any residents asked for a private function.
And what is the likelihood of that happening?
Context that I thought I heard, but I wasn't here in 2000 when they built the City Hall and the promises were made, is that they were, when they say, when they say citizens' use, it wasn't them personally, it was the organizations that they represent that serve Chavino Park. But, you know, someone else can clarify that. I don't know.
Okay. I'm the only one that was on council back then. And we didn't ever come up with a policy, because what got stopped at the time that we were working on a policy was the fire chief stating that we should not be having groups in here unless we put in a fire sprinkler system and did other retrofitting to the building, which we were not willing to spend $150,000 to do. So that was one of the reasons why we chose to just not, to just go with the not allowing anything to happen, and not, we didn't do a policy, we just dropped it. So we haven't had people using the building, but we had decided, because that was a statement made by our fire chief, that we shouldn't subject ourselves to that type of liability if something were to happen.
In 2011, did you all discuss the historical use of this building, and whether citizens had used it for private purposes, private parties?
And they had not.
They had not, okay. So, so in the history of the building, nobody has used it except for the types of organizations that Bill has listed in, or that were listed in the 2011 under, policy under E.
Okay. So then I have a question for council. Is resident listed in, is a resident encompassed and contemplated in F? Is that your legal counsel on the issue?
Well, I'm not sure that that's really a legal question.
Dan, if you get up a little bit closer to your mic, please, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure that that's a legal question. I think that residents would be encompassed by either E or F. I mean, I don't see how it's.
Well, then, I guess if someone's not coming up as part of the HOA, or any of the.
Well, as you stated, that's not an exhaustive list, so I really don't know what group it might or might not be. And as the mayor stated earlier, it could be a group of two people, or whatever. I think the assumption would be, if they come up and say, I'm a member of such and such group, or, or a community or civic organization, that you're going to take them at their word. Private functions, rentals for private functions would be, I guess, any, any citizen making use of the facility for a purpose other than one that serves the general welfare of the community, as stated in the definition of what is a community and civic organization.
And could not the private functions also be for non-residents?
Yes. It could. Now, one of the things that you can do is, if there's concern about rentals for private functions, you know, in the agreement that they're required to sign, in many, it's not that unusual. The thing that makes it unusual is that it's, it's your City Hall building. But municipal buildings in most cities are rented for private functions to citizens, and, and the, without limitation, other than whatever's in the agreement they sign, you know, whether it's, you know, no alcohol, no smoking, you know, just the general things you would expect, you know, and so that's, certainly that would be the case here as well, in any kind of agreement they would sign for a private function, I would assume.
But as you said, it's usually a civic center. It's not council chambers.
If, for cities that are fortunate enough to have, you know, multiple municipal buildings for those types of things, yes, it's generally not City Hall. But, but not every community, you know, has, has multiple facilities available, so.
Is it possible to make the rental for private functions for residents only?
Think you could. You know, certainly. I mean, that could be, that could be one of the decisions that you make. You know, I think what you have to consider is that, but yeah, I think, I think that's one you could. I mean, I think that's one that you could do. As long as you're not distinguishing within that group itself, only, only some citizens. But if you have to, if I have to come in and show that I'm a resident of Chavino Park with whatever in order to have access to the facility, that's defensible. That's just, that's no different than cities that, you know, charge differently for residents if they want to access a municipal golf course or a swimming pool. That's the other thing you could do, is just different fee structure for non-residents. But yeah, I think you could do that.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
So why couldn't we do that?
No, that's what we're talking about.
Especially if we, if we, if we've just heard council tell us that we can do it, we could also, right. And, you know, you could waive the fees for residents and charge fees for.
Actually, no, no. That's not kind of, I don't think that that's one of those things, you know, you've got to remember that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, we could, as a council, decide we could waive fees for residents and have a fee for non-residents.
I would have difficulty with Bill doing that, and the reason I'd have difficulty with Bill doing that is that this building can be used for public purposes. At the point that we decide to let it be used for private purposes, we're required to get compensation. That's what the Texas Constitution tells us. If we're prepared to not follow the Texas Constitution, then we can let citizens have it for free. But somewhere down the road, every one of us that votes on this, I don't get to vote, fortunately, could possibly be sued. And I would not recommend that anybody take that tact. Bob, you, you had a question?
So, first of all, I appreciate both Alderman Heisel and Alderman Ross spending the time looking into this. And as we've stated in previous meetings, in the December meeting, that was the first time that all of us were presented with that information. So this is obviously relatively new in the last couple of months, as far as us reviewing this data. But it seems very clear to me, based on my review of all the documents, listening to the citizens, the many citizens that have come and had very thoughtful comments and their concerns, that the limited use forum, for me, is, is what I think would be most appropriate in our city. To allow the people, I think from the citizens' comments, overwhelming is that this building is for the citizens of Chavino Park. It's, it's the government, it's the citizens to have access. And so I think that, that there is a lot of truth to that, but I think we have to be intelligent and like-minded and legal-minded when we, when we lay this policy down. I didn't hear the citizens, when they came and spoke, and many of them are here tonight, say, we need access to this facility for parties, for private functions. That doesn't seem to be, to have been the, I haven't heard that yet, actually. But the women's club, the scouts, the HOA meetings, those are important functions that flow in our city, and those are mentioned in this document very specifically, not limited to, but those tend to be the, the main groups that need access, and I agree, they do as well. But I don't necessarily think that we need to really go down the road of, of opening it up to private parties. This facility is not, is not, you know, whether it's in our city, or especially opening up to residents outside of our city to have private parties. I just don't feel that's something that we need to open ourselves up to. And I think that, that this document, and that's why I brought this up in the workshop last month, was the December, the, excuse me, 2011 document that was put together has a lot of merit to it. I think we've tweaked it a little bit, and I think there's maybe a few other things we need to consider. But overall, I think that's a very reasonable way to look at things. And that's where, that's where I stand on it. But I, I just have a little bit of trouble opening up to private functions, certainly outside of our, of our city. And I don't really think, you know, and as many people have brought up, and we've, and we've confirmed that with the city manager, the numbers of, of groups that have requested to have these private functions is, is almost nil. So I think we, you know, hopefully, that's not an issue down the road. But I don't think that's what the intent has been, and from the citizens' comments, it seems as though this policy is, is more in line with, with what they're looking for.
So you would strike F?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Alan?
I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I said, so would he recommend striking F, which is the private party function?
And Bill, do you, do you have a recommendation, one way or the other, on, on item F? Do you have a recommendation for us concerning item F?
He already told us.
And you're, yes?
Yes, I recommend you strike it.
Okay. Okay, so.
I think that, I thought the attorney just told us that we could, we could accomplish accommodating residents for private functions, because I think we have heard from residents saying that they want access to it.
I don't think anyone really wants to have their quinceañera here.
Well, I think.
I really don't. I mean, I think that, that E really encompasses all of the functions that people have been talking about. That, you know, it's meetings of community and civic organizations, and it's not limited to the ones we've, we've named. So if somebody starts a new organization, they certainly could have access to the City Hall. I mean, I'm not, I don't really think that anyone was asking to have a birthday party here.
Michelle?
And then I have a question on the, the ability to charge or not charge. So if we don't charge, if we can't not charge for non-city use, then how do we let people use it during the day for non-city use and not charge?
Well, because those are going to be based upon a public purpose. If it is a public, you know, if it is, there's private purpose and a public purpose. Any public purpose can be free, because it's a public purpose. We, the community, support public purposes within our community. If it is a private purpose, then we should be charging compensation. We should be receiving compensation. You look at the types of uses that have gone on in this building, every one of them would meet the standard of being a public purpose. The fact that a group of citizens from a homeowner's association wants to come here, they are representative of a group of citizens. If Neighborhood Watch were to want to come here and to have a meeting, they represent a group of citizens, and they are talking about community issues. I know that it happens to be issues that only relate to their subset of our overall community, but it's not required as a public purpose to represent all of the people's opinions at exactly the same time. You can represent the opinions of diverse groups and still be a public purpose. Dan, is that fair?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. I concur completely.
Okay.
And I just want to be clear. I think what the attorney told us was that we can limit it to residents, and we can modify or charge a nominal fee for private use.
I did, I actually didn't mention any fees. All I said was that you could limit it to residents, or you could, if you allowed other residents, have a different fee structure for those that are non-residents, so.
Right. You mentioned the municipal golf course as an example.
Yes, yes.
So that's what I was referencing with respect to the fees.
Okay.
In terms of why I recommend removing that, I mean, I don't, you know, it's not, I'm falling on my sword on this because I feel so strongly. I just know that a lot of these things would be after-hours, it requires staff time, you know, so we would pay them overtime, not a big deal, we would collect the fees. But, you know, you are, we do have a lot of, you're talking about the Public Works guys, myself, the guys that already work overtime a lot and on the weekends, and I do try to minimize when I call them in and do that. That's, that's one point. The other point is, the details, the devil in the details is in the lease agreement. And so you've got to really then dive down into the lease agreement, and then you start making your rules in your lease agreement, which the more rules you have, the more you can be challenged. This limited public use, where you allow community and civic organizations as defined by those specific to Chavino Park, is pretty broad. And, but it's focused and narrowed to Chavino Park only, and you can interpret that pretty, you know, a little bit cleaner than if you're just trying to make decisions on which private organization to do and which not, and things like that. I mean, that's, that's just my gut feeling. I mean, I can, we can adapt however council wants to it. I do know that, you know, we did talk to Sean Fitzpatrick, and he, you know, he came up and spoke pretty much against a limited use or a use, but as we walked through this, this policy with him, he said, yes, you could do a limited use. He had some caution on the public, I mean, on the, on the, on the private use piece, I will tell you that, and.
What's his caution on that?
Again, because, and I can't remember the exact comment, but that now opens up to greater uses, and then you could have people that want to lease this, that you would deem unfavorable, and it's hard to regulate, it's harder to regulate that when you start establishing rules. Well, you're okay, but you're not okay. You're, you're, you know, I've, in their lease agreement, because it's not a policy, you're saying, these private organizations can use it, but these can't, but those are challenged. Those are more easily challenged, because you can say, why did you say I could use it, or they could use it, but I can't? And that's what he, he told me, and I'm paraphrasing that. So I just, again.
Well, was his recommendation to not include it?
He had reservations. I can't, I'm not going to speak for him on that.
He's also not our attorney, so, you know, he's, he's a citizen, he happens to be a subject matter expert, and we certainly appreciate all of his input. And I think that Bill has given a fair representation of what I can remember hearing from Sean.
Oh, you were there as well?
I was with him, yes.
Okay.
I was the one that arranged the meeting and invited Bill. So is there a consensus that we, that we continue forward and that we, that we limit our discussions to items other than rentals for public, for private functions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's our consensus, okay. So, so now, now we've decided, we haven't decided anything, but the consensus is moving toward allowing all the traditional groups that have used this facility to continue to use this facility. And in allowing them to use the facility, the next question is, well, what are the reasonable terms upon which people can use this? Now, Bill has advised me that during the hours of 10:00 to 4:30, having people in here does not require additional staffing, does not require additional input from the community, and as long as they're meeting, as long as they're the civic types of organizations, they're meeting the public purpose, and so we don't get to the point of needing compensation, and they're not costing us any money. And so Bill's recommendation that he shared with me was, Bill, and don't let me put words in your mouth, please, I'm, that, that between 10:00 and 4:30, that we allow people to use it for non-consecutive periods of time, because we don't want people just coming here and camping out. This isn't a classroom for some organization to have a six-week seminar series on, and for sufficiently limited period of time that we know that they're all going home after a reasonable period. So the question is, is that an idea? Is it everybody pays, or, or is it something where we would allow for the regular business hour use, that, that does not interfere with the overall use of this facility, this global facility, for city purposes, that we would allow people to use these chambers for free within the, Bill, and I think we talked about the 10:00 to 4:30 time period?
Correct.
Okay. Is, is that something that we would be willing to consider, or do we want to get paid in all cases? Bob?
I think we, we absolutely consider that. I can't imagine telling the women's club they have to pay a fee to come meet in City Hall, or.
Or the homeowners associations.
Homeowners associations, or any of those folks.
The only issue I have is, is the evenings and Saturdays.
And that's, that's why I, you know, was breaking this out into the two parts, so that we can, I want to try to build that, that foundation and know what our consensus is before we go to the next level, so that we know that those issues are behind us. How are you, you guys on, on that idea?
So Bill?
I'm sorry.
Just one other comment, I want to go back to, and it, Bill had mentioned this, but when you get into the, the after-hours functions and the private functions you're dealing with, we know we have septic tank issues, that we've, we've, you know, we're looking to address those, and we've had problems in the past. But more importantly, I think, is the staffing, and, and, you know, we have a small staff here at City Hall. And to ask those people to stay later, to manage that, to ask our police to spend more time, excuse me, spend more time on these functions than out in our city dealing with, with the things that we need them to deal with, I think that's what we really have to consider. We just don't have the resources. And we just don't have the resources that a bigger city has to have those functions. So, you know, the septic tank is one that, you know, I wanted to bring up. And just that, more importantly, in my estimation, is, is to protect the city staff and not have them, you know, working undue hours to, to support special functions.
I agree.
Okay, let me go back. Alan, did you have something to add?
I, I'm saying that I'm in favor of the limited use policy with allowing free use of city hall between 10:00 and 4:30. When I was on the HOA, we would request in advance to meet here. We'd block a time of about an hour, never took that long, and then we left. And it was only once a quarter. It wasn't a consecutive type thing.
And when you blocked it, did you give staff requested instructions on moving furniture and having a certain setup? Or you just came and used whatever was here?
That I'd have to not know, because I was not, the homeowners' association actually put the request in. So I never saw the request.
Xena.
No, could, could you tell us about the configuration for groups?
Oh, okay.
I will say that there are times where we have adjusted the tables and the chairs to accommodate groups based upon what they are. Typically, the homeowners' associations come with a small footprint. They don't have a lot of people come, but, uh, you know, that typically, we're in here every day doing maintenance to city hall, and it's not a arduous task associated with that.
Michelle?
Quick question. What is the current time that most of these organizations are requesting to meet? Is it between 10:00 and 4:30?
Yes. No?
Not for our HOA. People meet at night and on Saturday morning.
No, we're talking about daytime meetings right now.
We haven't had any requests for Saturday morning meetings, nor nights.
Well, my question is, when do, when do these community and civic organizations, including but not limited to Neighborhood Watch, homeowners' associations, women's club, business club, and boy scout, girl scout, what has been the practice in the past for when they request to meet? If, if they're requesting to meet between 10:00 and 4:30, that seems to make perfect sense. If they're, if they have been regularly meeting, you know, at 6:00, 6:30, because most of the folks that make up the organizations are, are residents who are working, and that's why I'm asking.
All homeowners' association meetings have been in the day here, that I'm aware of.
Between 10:00 and 4:30?
Am I wrong?
We, we have two, we're breaking this into two segments. Right now, we're just talking about the daytime stuff, and then we have to talk about the after-hours and the weekend stuff. So we're just talking about Monday through Friday.
We've had one in the past, a homeowners' association meeting. And we have another one coming up. Okay, I stand corrected.
And, and did you say in the evening? Okay.
But, but we're talking about a free use policy, because this is the easy time during the daytime, and we can talk about the additional incremental cost of having people come after hours, because we have to have our administrative staff, who either gets comp time or overtime, stay extra hours. Uh, and that, that represents a real cost for the city. So we're, we're segregating these out into two segments. One that was, one that was the easier issue, and then we're going to address the more difficult issue, because there is an incremental cost. And so that's the reason that we are talking about this first thing first.
And I, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to get an answer to when these organizations are requesting to meet, because they're made up of residents, most of whom are working.
And I think that Bill said that there have been a couple of requests for after-hours, and that almost all the other requests have been within the 10:00 to 4:30 time period. And, don't let me put words in your mouth, Bill.
That's, that's correct. Now, you know, the women's club is going to do a meet the candidates night. That's, I think, I don't know what time that starts. It's seven or something, and also the Neighborhood Watch. So those are evening ones, but those aren't routine things. I mean, I was talking about homeowners', so, you know, typically, I see them at 10 o'clock, or 10:30 or 11:00. I don't know the exact times, but there's, remember, there's not a lot of meetings in city hall.
Right.
Okay, so, so is there a consensus that between the hours of 10:00 and 4:30, that community and civic organizations that are focused on Chauvin Park should be permitted to use city hall on a free basis, provided we don't daisy chain meetings out for, into eternity, and that this is not all-day affairs to where there is a disruption of city council type of activities? Okay. Okay.
I, I, I want to hear what the second part is, because I don't really understand why we would charge them. I mean, I, I want to hear.
Do you want to charge them, Mary Ann? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm, I'm trying to.
Because Bill has told us there's not an incremental cost, and we're fine with no incre, I think that everybody's fine as long as there's a public purpose, as long as we satisfy the Texas Constitution, that we would allow people to use it. Now, we're going to talk about there is an incremental cost, and does that justify the public purpose and the possibility that that might, public purposes might not be met?
Perfect, and I just want to say that you were asking if there was consensus, and I was, I have questions.
And there's a, looks like there's a four out of five consensus on that item. Okay, so now we're going to talk about the after-hours use. And Bill, um, what does it take to open this, to keep this building open after hours?
It varies. I mean, if it's five or six, you know, then we leave it open, and then people come in, then there's people that close it. If it's a seven or eight or nine, 10, then, um, again, if it's a larger event, it would probably require security, would require someone to be just monitoring it. If it's a small event, we, a lot of times, we'll open it up. They'll hold the event, and we'll have the police come in afterwards and close it out.
So like an HOA meeting that starts at 6:00, is that the one that's next week? Six, 6:00? So 7:00 to 9:00. What would, what would occur at that particular meeting? Who, who stays here, who closes that down?
Well, I hadn't really thought about how we're going to approach that one.
How have we done it in the past?
Uh, we haven't had one lately that has been at night, that required a lot, now.
Can we not ask them to just provide an off-duty police officer for one, security reasons, but plus he can close and open and close the building?
The question is, do we need constant police? And so if, if the answer is no, then alls I have to do is, when they finish, finish, then I need to have a policeman come and close it up. If it's a bigger, it depends on what the scope of the function is. If it's just coming in here, and they're going to meet, and there is no requirements, I don't have to have someone here the entire time.
So you leave it, like, so next week, you'll leave, you'll leave the doors open. There's probably not going to be any city staff here, right, at 7:00, most likely?
Probably not.
Somebody's going to have to open the building.
So, or will it be open, or will someone have to come?
Well, in this case, I'll probably stay till 7:00, and then make sure it's open, and then I'll go home.
That's not fair to you, Bill, and, you know.
What's that?
That's not fair to you.
But I'm usually here at 7:00 anyway.
But I'm just saying, that, that is not fair to you, because you might not be here at 7:00.
Right.
And so we need to come up with a policy that.
If I was here at 7:00, I could be here. If not, I would have the police come by and open it up, or one of the Public Works guys come up and open it up.
And if we had the Public Works people come up, then we're going to be paying time and a half for their time in all cases.
If I did, but.
Isn't a police officer available to do that? I mean.
Yeah, I can, I, and, and we have done this. We, we have a police officer open it up. He comes in, sets it up, makes sure everything's going. Then, if the meeting, he leaves, and then he comes back and closes it up. So that's certainly an option.
Well, but I will tell you, if there's something else that's going on in the city, there's an accident, a robbery, or whatever, then the police don't come open up for you when you want them to.
Right. But what we're talking about is really just the, we're just talking about these, these organizations that we have listed here, the civic organizations, the HOA, residents that, you know.
You're asking citizens, also, you're asking citizens who are not members of any of these organizations to subsidize the after-hours use for those citizens? Is that fair to citizens who aren't a member of an HOA, the women's club, a, a boys scout troop, to pay for someone else, to pay for staff to come up and open this building for another group that they'll never use city hall?
What other group? Because I thought we were talking, I thought we said no private.
It's subsidizing one citizen over another, and I don't know that we want to, to do that.
Well, I thought we precluded the private.
We did.
So I don't know what other.
What I'm saying is, is that not every citizen is a member of these organizations. So what you're asking is citizens who are not members, to subsidize the citizens who are the staff salary.
I'm not asking that at all. I'm saying, I'm saying, let's, let's treat residents as the intelligent folks that they are. If they're, if they're working on an HOA group, or they're part of the women's club, or they're part of, uh, anything that's listed here, and they want to use city hall to conduct a meeting.
Then let's encourage it to happen during the day, as opposed to at night.
Well, they're working, that's the thing, Vicki, they're working too.
When we're bringing staff in. Well, so am I, but, but we, we're asking these people who are working 40, 50 hours a week to come open up the building and then come close it.
I don't want to interrupt you, I apologize for that. I, I'm, I think what the city manager told us is that a police officer can open it and close it.
And then you're taking a police officer off the street to come open this building, and then come back and close the building. Instead of going out and making sure that houses aren't being burglarized, he's up here. I think we need to look at the cost of the staff to open and close the building, and I don't think it's unreasonable to ask people to pay for a staff member to open and close the building.
Okay, I'm going to recognize Bob. Bob's been waiting to talk, and.
No, those are good comments. I, I tend to think, and that's why I asked Bill specifically, if, you know, these groups that we're talking about are residents. They're neighbors, they're our friends, they're our loved ones. So, you know, I, my thoughts are that if, and that's, you know, I appreciate you clarifying that, because I don't want you staying here till 7:00. Your family doesn't want you, and, and we need you home, so you can come back the next day and, and do a better job than you did the day before. If a police officer can come and, and spend five minutes opening the door and letting people in and turn around and go do his thing, and come back at, at whatever designated time that, that he or she has to be back, I don't think that's totally unreasonable. I don't think that's taking up a lot of staff time or a lot of money. I think that's something that, that's more than reasonable. But if we are using you, or Xena, or any of the staff to stay late, or Public Works, I mean, that's crazy. And, and yeah, we would need to charge for that, but I don't, I, it doesn't, it doesn't, that doesn't, you know, preclude us from, from doing it the way you're talking about. I think that's reasonable to me, if, if, if we can do that. Now, I will tell you, I, I am very adamant about having the police out there. So, um, that's, that's, that's another agenda for me for, for, you know, very soon, is to look at all of that and how we're using our staff, and, and are we, you know, maximizing the city as far as the protection of the police force? But in that situation, I don't believe that that's going to take a significant amount of time to let residents.
As long as the, these groups or whatever understand that if a police officer is on a call, or, you know, at an accident, or on a call, and they're not available, they may have to wait out front 15, 20 minutes.
But in, in, that's a good point. The other question is, is when we, when we close everything else down, I mean, there's not, they have no access to any of the important areas other than this, and I guess even the dais could be closed, and they would be maybe in the lobby until the police officer, you know, came back, or until they came. Or the outdoor, the outer doors would be closed, so they would, so you'd have to let them in.
So they may have to wait, when it's that's.
And I think that kind of goes to the culture of Chauvin Park. We're a small community. We, for the most part, we, we can't know everybody, but, you know, that's, that's part of it. That's part of the give and take of being in a close-knit, small community. And I think folks would probably wait and be fine with that.
Bill, you have provided us a fee schedule in your materials. Uh, what were you anticipating the fee schedule to apply to? Because you are the one that recommended that there not be a fee for the use between 10:00 and 4:30.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry, Bob.
I, I asked Bill for his inclusion of a fee schedule, because he was the one that recommended the 10:00 to 4:30 as a free use. And so the implication is that the fee schedule would apply to the after-hours use. And this may just simply be a representation of what a reasonable fee schedule would be as a base fee number. Uh, and, and some of these things, you know, whether we have a fee schedule or not, things like deposits are certainly appropriate items to include in all cases. And I believe that Bill included a $500 deposit, simply because that would allow us to ensure that in the event, uh, a, a, an event insurance policy did not pay, that our insurance policy would pay the excess, and that we would have a $500 deposit on hand to make sure that the city wasn't out any money. But Bill, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, we have included a fee schedule. It's a limited fee schedule. It's, it's a nominal fee schedule at that.
Yeah, and again, the policy from 2011, and the way it was presented in, in that draft, also allowed for private rentals. And so, you know, certainly if we're doing private rentals, we would get a fee schedule. I think that, um, you know, from the standpoint of city use and the resources, I will always look to minimize the impact on the guys and, and staff. There, they can't always do that. It's, most of the time, it's just easy for me to stay and keep it open than to have to tell someone and remind it. But that's not really a major impact, and it's easy for them to close it out. So, um, I think it's, um, I think either way the council goes in terms of whether or not you charge a fee after hours or, or on the weekends. I mean, I would be more inclined to say, and feel strongly, that during the weekends, you certainly should, you know, maybe charge a fee. But I'm not, again, I don't feel that strongly about it. There's, citizens pay taxes, and, and I get taxes, and we, we spend it wisely. It would be, seemed to be more justified if you charged fees on the weekends over weekdays. Evening hours over work hours. Is there, is there a right answer? Probably not in this one here. Certainly for private functions, you would need to charge fees for, you know, leasing of rentals, et cetera. So, again, I think we've got it scoped. It's, it's not a huge effort, there may be some effort. Is it unreasonable? Probably not. We picked $500 because our insurance for the building is, we have a $500 deductible. Is that necessary? I don't know. It may be a necess, a risk that we're willing to take, okay? I'm not completely risk averse on everything. There are certain risks inherent in everything we do. It's a question that council has to ask. Is $500 a reasonable risk, or we want to make sure we're covered on that?
Just a question.
Mary Ann?
The $500, isn't that related to the private use? Are, are we really going to ask the women's club and?
It's a deposit.
I, I recognize that, but are we really, is that something that we're going to ask residents to do? I'm just asking for clarification. Was that specific to a, a private function?
Well, I don't know that I, maybe we need to take a look at that in more detail. I mean, again, we took the existing policy, we tweaked it a little bit, knowing that we are going to have dialogue here, we're going to have discussion if we get the major muscle moves associated with that. And maybe this is a major muscle move, maybe we need to, maybe I need, you know, council to decide. I mean, having a deposit, relatively speaking, and we've had deposits here before, and typically, someone writes a check, and then at the end of the event, we give them the check back, and it's not a big issue unless there's, there's never been an issue associated with that, but.
So on the, again, back to the meeting that's going to occur, the HOA meeting on Tuesday at 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock, is that, with our residents, does it make sense to charge a deposit for that group?
Well, Bob, anytime a group comes together, things happen. You know, nobody intends to come and damage property. You know, you can go to your next-door neighbor's house, and all of a sudden, your kids run a broom through their windows, and then the question is, do you man up and pay for it? Or do you let your neighbor make a submission on their glass policy? And, you know, my answer is, my kids always paid for everything that we broke, because that's the only way that people behave in a polite society. If a group breaks something, they ought to pay for it, is my opinion. And, and the fact that we have community organizations that are ill-defined, you know, the women's club is not a, um, it's not an incorporated organization. Yeah, I know and love those women, but they're not a specific group. There's not somebody that you can say, oh, well, it was Mary Warner, who's with the women's club. She's the one that should have to write the check, because they broke things. Because Mary has broken things many times in my life. But somebody should, there should be a check in advance so that we know who is going to pay, so that the city's not going to pay. And I think that Bill's described a very easy operational policy as that we hold checks. We just simply hold checks until they.
And give it back at the end.
I, I think, I think you put it well when you said, your kids go to somebody's house, and if they break something, they pay for it. And that's what happens in polite society. And I know we cannot make assumptions about folks, but I think we can respect residents that if they come and use city. that if they come and use City Hall, if they do something to City Hall, they're gonna pay for it. And most, you're right, accidents will happen. But I don't think the HOA or Neighborhood Watch or any organization that needs to come up and use City Hall from seven to nine is, is, if they do something, that somebody's not gonna pay for it.
Alan.
Well, I don't have a problem with that because what I'm hearing is that evening HOA meeting is gonna write a check for $500. If nothing happens, you give them their original check back. So it's not a burden on anybody. But I disagree with you that people will own up if they break something or damage it.
There's a lot of mailboxes in this community that are attesting to that they do not.
I'm, I'm, I don't know. I'm pretty sure our residents aren't gonna go around doing that, but maybe I'm in the minority.
Okay. Okay, so, so the, the fee structure is, is composed of two items. Number one, is there a fee for after-hours use? The second, is there a deposit? Is there a consensus as far as whether there should be a deposit? Should there be a deposit?
Yes.
Okay. I've heard three people say yes.
I say no.
Okay, so, so the consensus at this point is actually a deposit.
Returnable, I think we need to make sure.
Yeah, no.
Returnable deposit.
Yeah, okay.
Not a, not a deposit that, you know, like you think for a wedding, but a returnable deposit.
Yeah, it's not something that if you cancel the building at the last, you know, two days in advance that we're gonna keep your money. Because it's not like we really are interested in getting the money. That, that wasn't the purpose of the deposit. The deposit is a damaged deposit, not a used deposit. Because it's not as if we're keeping other people from using the facility for that reason. Okay, the next item is, do you charge a nominal charge for people to come and use it after hours?
I really just want the, the, the staff covered. That if a staff member has to come and be here or a staff member has to come back and open and close, I just want the staff to be taken care of. I mean, that's what I think is absolutely paramount. You know, like, like Bob pointed out, we're a small city, we have a limited staff, and we certainly don't wanna stretch them thin. But if they're having to come after hours, they should be compensated by whomever's using the building.
Okay, so, so something like a $40 per hour fee? Is that what you're suggesting? Because by the time you load in health insurance and overtime and other things like that, you can get up there pretty quickly because you have, remember, we have a two-for-one match on retirement savings and you have time and a half for our employees. Employee makes $15, that's twenty-two, that's $22.50, plus the 401K on top of that is another 15 percent. That's about $28 an hour for a $15 an hour employee. Is, is that what we're talking about? Is it on an hourly basis that you would look to apply it? Or is it one of those things that it just doesn't really matter? Because it, it's more difficult for Laura to do the bookkeeping than it is for us to say, well, but we made them pay.
Let the organization hire an employee for whatever is a reasonable cost. I mean, that would, they could work it out with the employee.
So that they could ask Xena to come here and-
We could give them the names of, these are the officers who'll be off-duty that day. And if you'd like to hire him for an hour, get with him and he'll tell you how much he'll charge you.
You gotta remember, most, most of these groups are nonprofits are, you know, we're talking about Women's Club, we're talking about, most of them don't even have the organization to write a check probably, unless Mary writes one. And-
She does.
Yeah, Glenda does.
There's the checkbook right there. But, you know, you have some nonprofits and you have groups that are, that are, she's got scolded, that, you know, they're, they, they don't have the ability. I mean, they do, I guess they do, but to me, if it's, if it's not imposing on our resources, it's not imposing on our staff, and these are our citizens and these are, you know, our friends and family. I don't know that it's necessary. On weekends, other things, maybe, I, I probably could be persuaded because that's a, maybe a little different scenario. But I don't know that, I don't know that, I don't wanna charge the HOA to come use our, our facility on a Thursday night from seven to nine.
Okay. Now, i- is it agreed that there's no fee for the, for the hours?
For the, for the after-hours?
Yeah.
I can agree with that.
As long as nobody complains if, like I said, we have a police officer who's stuck in traffic, whatever. Because I don't wanna make the city manager wait around to leave the building open or Xena or any of the other, you know, employees that are paid on a salary basis.
Okay. Now, now let's talk about the non-business hours as far as weekdays, and then we'll talk about weekends separate. So I want to, I wanna kinda keep building this, the layers on this cake and hopefully have a cake at the end of the process. Okay, so let's talk about weekday hours. And weekday hours are Monday through Thursday. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday are weekends. Our staff has special considerations on, on weekends, just like the rest of us, and they should be able to expect to go home and not to expect to have to come back up to City Hall because somebody wants to have their community event at City Hall. So let, let's talk about what do we do as far as Monday through Thursday? What are appropriate hours? You know, we've talked about starting at four-thirty and the HOA requested nine o'clock. It's not an unreasonable hour. These, this is a weeknight. People go home early. Are those hours that y'all can live with? That the, that the City Hall would be available until nine o'clock? Or should it close earlier? Or should it close later?
I have no problem with the nine, nine PM.
Okay, it, does anybody else have a thought? So nine o'clock, Monday through Thursday is fine. Is that the, did I get enough nods of heads? Okay. Now let's talk about, now let's talk about Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Those are not traditional times in the city. We have basically four events that the city participates in. And then we have outdoor use on weekends, on, on various weekends in our community. Do we want to open up City Hall for nighttime use on Fridays? Do we want to open up City Hall for Saturdays and Sundays?
No.
Has there ever, have there been any requests for that, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? Besides the-
I'm gonna recognize the mayor as a presenter.
If you build it, they will come. And if you had the ability to have Saturday or Sunday, I'm sure there would be a Girl Scout troop or Boy Scout troop coming here on Saturday, for sure.
Well, that's, that was my question is, what has been the past practice if it's been requested? A meeting request on Saturday, Chavino Park?
Yeah, it sounds like the mayor opened up the building. Okay.
Well, can I ask the city manager as well? I mean, what, what has been the-
There may have been a couple very small organizations that met for an hour on Saturday morning. Nothing that I'm aware of on Sunday. We did have, you know, we have some outside events. And that is outside this policy. There'll have to be another policy. But that should be relative, I mean, I don't think there's any controversy on the outside use, so.
Yeah, but, but I believe that at the moment that we open up on Saturdays, that we're going to have to open them on Sundays because the connotation is going to be, well, you've excluded people for religious purposes on Sunday. And if you, if you allow it on Saturday, why can't you allow it on Sunday?
And what is our city attorney feel about that?
It, somebody could certainly make that argument. I, I don't know. Honest, I do not know. I mean, I think there's that risk, obviously. But, I mean, I think you have the discretion to say you, you don't want Sunday use or Saturday use. But I could, I can understand where the mayor's coming from, though.
Okay. Are, are we concerned about Saturday and Sunday use? That's the question to you guys. Are we concerned? It's, it's not one of those things that, other than the mayor and his one example that we, we are even aware of groups asking for Saturday use.
I, I don't see why any of the groups that are listed here would want a Saturday or Sunday use anyway. So I, I would just say, keep it closed.
I would say, I would agree with Mayor Marr that if, if they had that option, if we, we made it public, I think they probably would. I think people would.
And then we come in with, now we have a completely different staffing issue and we go from a free policy to, well, we're gonna have to figure out how to pay for this. Because we can't expect Xena to come back up here on the Saturdays that people decide, I wanna come up to City Hall. That's just not appropriate.
No, you look too far away. Bill could-
Yeah, yeah, it's Bill's responsibility. Alan.
I wanted to ask the question, the one outside event that I remember is when the shortwave radio club or whatever used. Did they have access to the restrooms or, in City Hall, or did they not use anything?
They had non-heasement access. Last year, they did ask if they could use-
It was open because I, I used them.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Bob and I were both here at one point.
They used, I think till like ten o'clock or a little bit, but they didn't have all night access.
Yeah.
Yeah. However, that is something that, that, you know, as we're making an accommodation for these groups, we're providing them a free facility and free use. And can they walk over to the, to the fire station? I've been in Boy Scouts and I've walked a half a mile to go to the restroom on many occasions.
But, but that's, that's the, that's the, we're talking about the outside, right? I mean, we're not, that's not on, for us.
Okay.
But that's why I asked just the question of, of these organizations that we're talking about, the folks that have, have come, most of them are Monday through Thursday. Those are the dates and times that they're requesting. Most.
Okay.
But those, the ones that haven't have requested a couple of times on Saturday, is what you represented?
I know the one that David Marr just mentioned is one of them. There may have been one other one, but I can't remember what date that was. There was, there was an organization that came in and I forgot what they were. It was not associated with homeowners, but it was a group of Chavino Park. It was a resident that sponsored an organization. It was a club. It included some of the other, and it was a short meeting. And I can't remember if it was a Saturday or Sunday, but it was-
Bill?
A weeknight, a weeknight, probably.
Okay. Bill, is our policy much simpler for you if we have a Monday through Thursday policy and we exclude evenings on Fridays, exclude Saturday and Sunday?
Yes. I mean, yes, absolutely.
And the question back to us then is, is that a reasonable limitation that we're placing on the types of organizations that we have all agreed we want to continue to be able to use this, this location? Michelle, I'm sorry.
You keep saying four-thirty to nine PM, Monday through Thursday, and then if we exclude Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday, what are we doing with Friday day?
Friday would be up until-
Four-thirty?
Four-thirty.
Oh, okay.
And I think the representation is that it's not just us that, that think that's a good thing. Most of the folks that are in those organizations aren't requesting Saturday. We've had one or two in the past two years or however long City Manager has been here. So that, that seems like, you know, most of those folks are working and want their weekends too.
Okay. So, do we have a consensus on the final item? Okay, it sounds that way. So, so basically, what we have, what we've come to is we've looked through the 2011 policy as modified by Sean Fitzpatrick, striking item F, providing for free use with no deposit between the hours of ten and four-thirty, providing for an after-hours deposit on Monday through Thursday until nine o'clock, with those being the hours. No fees would be, would be expected by any community organization. City Manager is going to have the authority to approve these organizations. Organizations are not gonna be able to basically turn this into their classroom, that these are non-consecutive sequential days. You know, this, this is a reasonable number of days that people are gonna be using it and for reasonable numbers of hours, that they don't come and stay all day long. And that the city manager will come up with the appropriate rental policy that says that. I'm assuming that even if you have a, you know, that if you're using it during the weekdays, you still have to sign the agreement. It's just that there's no deposit. But there still will always be a written agreement that, that authorizes and that the organization indemnifies the city for any damages. Would that be, would those be the general terms that we're looking at? Okay. Do we have anything else that we wanna talk about concerning this policy this evening? Are we prepared to, is there a consensus from council to, to send this back to the city manager with a request that he provided to us at the earliest convenience for a formal policy for acceptance by city council? It's not a vote, it's a consensus. Is that the consensus?
Yes.
Send it back to us. He's gotta, he's gotta fine-tune the policy. Are we there? Okay, is there anything else that is left in item 5.1 of the agenda? If there's not, then I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn under item six.
So moved.
Michelle Ross has made a motion to adjourn. Alan Barrier has seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries.